Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Before we begin the formal meeting, we're going to have testimony on non-agenda items. We have quite a few people who have signed up, so we're going to have to limit it to two minutes per person. Now, if there's someone who really wants to have the full three minutes, you can just do not come up and speak, and we'll reserve the time for you at the end of the meeting, when we also have non-agenda public testimony, okay? So, please come up when I call your name. There will be a green light after one minute. The yellow light will come on to show that you're in your final minute, so try to wrap it up while the yellow light's on, so we don't have to cut you off at the end of that time. Okay? Let's start off with Minerva Espejo, Malvina Quebrado, Elida Sainz Perez, and Claudia Escoto. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Minerva Espejo, and I represent parents from Sherman Elementary, and I live in San Diego, 3735 42nd Street. I want to read a letter. My English is not perfect, then I want to try my best, because I want to, you feel what I feel with this letter. Then I start. If you don't understand any, you have it in paper.
Thank you.
Dear Board Members, we are representing Sherman pre-kindre and kindergarten parents and children. We are here together to ask for your support and the problem solution to a problem that five years ago started as a concern. We know that you are representing the best interests of all children's and parents, and we trust that you are going to give this problem the importance that it deserves. My name is Minerva Espejo, and five years ago, I was a member of Head Start Policy Council. I requested for site playground chase structures, sorry, because in extremely hot days, kids were hiding under stairs to cover themselves from the hot sun. Sherman Site has different play areas where kids can interact with each other, express themselves, and develop their motor and sensory skills. Also, they rarely are allowed to enjoy it due to the hot sun. There is no place where the sun rays do not reach. Children are between three and five years old. Their skin is extremely sensible at this age, and for healthy issues, it's extremely dangerous to expose these kids to the sun direct rays. It is for the health of the kids that we please ask for an answer. There are now five generations of students that have suffered through the same sunburns during recess. We have asked for five years for chase to cover the playground.
Hi, my name is Joanna Raboyador, and I will continue on Minerva Espejo's letter. To Head Start and to the two years to the school site, we know that Head Start work in collaboration with San Diego School District. One of these entities needs to be responsible for the safety of students. You need to know what is happening to our kids to better advocate for them. These two entities have no communication at all, or they are working inappropriately, and the result of their negligence is that our children have still been exposed to the extreme sun rays during school hours. Parents of Sherman Preschool have been asking for the same issue these past five years at every meeting we have, and we have our minutes to prove it. As Site SSC member, I have asked for the same for the last two years, but I was told that there will be a conflict if school bought it, because the shades were approved five years ago, and the installation is still in process. A week ago, after presenting our interest to ask for answers to the board, we were surprised to know that Sherman Site has never been in the list of shades installation. This was due to the lack of communication between Head Start and the district. We will not tolerate this miscommunication among them any longer. Our kids are suffering every day that the department in charge is not fulfilling the process. There are now five years of pleading for the same issue, the shades to protect our children's skin. Please do the correct thing and demand for the immediate installation of shades. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the letter with the signs of the parents of the preschool and kindergarten. You want to pass it on?
Okay, thank you.
And now I'm going to read a letter to you that was written by some parents to Mr. Edward, to the principal of Sherman Elementary School. Dear Principal of Sherman Elementary, the parents of children with special needs would like you to know that we are not pleased with the classroom change that was done to our children. We have been given a few reasons, but the following reasons worry us the most. The first reason is that there is not enough room for the 18 students and their daily activities. The second reason is that the bathroom is now located outside the classroom. This is inconvenient, because the children that have to, because these children have to use the bathroom frequently. The third reason is that the classroom is located further from the exit of the school. This means that in case of an emergency, it will be more difficult for the teachers to be able to maintain the children safe. Our children respond in different ways, as opposed to other children, in case of emergencies, especially when they are surrounded by lots of noise and people. In this case, they would have to go a further distance in which they could become startled, making the situation even more difficult. We would like to find another solution for the students in fifth grade, so that our children can return to their previous classroom. We appreciate it, and there are signatures from all the parents.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claudia Escoto, and I'm one of the parents. My daughter is Cassandra, and I have this right here for you guys, which backs up the letter that we have. It's the California Code of Regulations that we got.
All right, thank you very much. Let's ask the acting superintendent, Dr. Meli Meyer, to, we've got your letters and information, and ask her to look into that situation and get back to the parents at Sherman. The special ed situation and the shading structure on both of those issues. And just so people know, and others too, when it comes to public testimony, we don't comment on it specifically, but we certainly refer to the staff to take action in certain cases. Okay?
Thank you.
Moving right along, Michael Paredes, and Citizen One, Two, and Three.
Yes, no Paris. I'm Philip Libard, I'm Citizen One, Two, or Three. Good evening, Board members. I'm here as a resident of San Diego, Southeast San Diego, and the issue I'm going to address the board about is staffing level at all the schools. There is this concept that south of eight gets treated one way, and north of eight gets treated another way.
That's right.
And if this is the practice of the San Diego Unified School District, this has got to stop. Currently, at Lincoln High School, there are 45 teachers who do not want to be there. So the question is, if the teachers don't want to be there, it seems like there's no incentive for them to perform well. That is also unacceptable. There are three middle schools in the District E: Bell, Fulton, and Knox. There's a deficiency of math and science teachers. So that's a situation that also has to be rectified. And finally, at the District Area One's, the cluster meeting about two or three weeks ago, Trustee Jackson mentioned that there's this practice that teachers who are reprimanded or in some way in academic, should I say, difficulties, they are not allowed to teach in north of the eight, but somehow they are allowed to teach in south of the eight. That is totally unfair. And if that is the case, we have to change that practice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other persons we have on the list are Citizen Four, Five, Six, and Seven. And just remember, we can't defer time to other persons, so, but each person can come up.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Edith Smith. I'm sure you're all aware. I'm here to speak to you today about the principal leadership in Area One, more specifically about the leadership at MTM Middle School. I have spoken for the last two years on this matter. I have had a number of meetings with both or either Dr. Meyer and Mr. Kober about what's going on at that school. The trustees voted for that school to become a neighborhood school, I think in 2010, and the staff, the principal, the vice principal, some teachers, and some classified, have been very opposed to that. They have treated the people in the neighborhood quite poorly. The parents have been put through way too much. I have met, and met, and met, for Mr. Kober and Dr. Meyer, and I asked them to cleanse the school, because that's what the community deserves. They would not, the staff there would not support the order of the trustees. I just passed you an email, which supports what the staff thinks. They asked them, "Do you want to teach the neighborhood school, our neighborhood students? We have to have an application to come to a neighborhood school." That's not okay. Parents have talked to Mr. Kober, they have submitted letters in fear of retaliation. The current vice principal can no longer serve our community, because she does not believe in our children, she does not respect that you have decided that it is a neighborhood school, and it should be treated like all neighborhood schools. The parents in the community will no longer accept this, and since we have not been able to get the systemic change of teachers and staff at that school, we're coming to you, so hopefully you will support what you decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen Eight and Nine? Okay, I'm going to give you three minutes, because I know you can't stay until the end of the meeting, so we normally have two minutes. I'll let you have the full three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
But just please watch the yellow light, so I don't want to cut you off.
My name is Ambrose Boudis. I live in the city of San Diego, have lived in the city of San Diego for 61 years, and I have been involved in a variety of programs within the San Diego City School District, and only once have I seen this district so confused as it seems to be today. One major factor in a district's effort to adequately educate its students is financial resource, and the application of resources in the most effective manner. Since San Diego City Schools' resources seem to be subpar, and students in large numbers are achieving at subpar levels, especially in schools in Southeast San Diego area, one would think that the district would go strong, that is, go strong after all available federal funds. That does not seem to be the case here. In President Obama's Race to the Top program, school districts have an opportunity to go bold to secure resources aimed at helping low-performance students improve their, the quality of education that is dispensed in local area schools. Of course, there are some conditions, including some things like a requirement to improve teacher evaluation, and utilizing a scientific assessment system for students, and et cetera, et cetera. As of this moment, I'm not aware that this district has taken that bold step to secure Race to the Top funds. I wonder why. I have a need to know. We are aware that the board has approved Lincoln and Morris Cluster to use Acuity, the Scientific Vetted Assessment System, for this year, and that it is currently probably in process in Area One schools. We are aware, of course, that the board approved the 2020 Vision Plan and other policy designed to meet your mission, that all students will graduate with the skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience to succeed. You know, of course, that all of this is rhetoric if resources and firm support are not provided. I'd like to emphasize that, the need for the resources and firm support. Most schools in Area One, excuse me, that-
Just go ahead and finish your sentence.
Pardon me?
Go ahead and finish your sentence.
Actually, what we're saying is that we want to emphasize the importance of your need to acquire those funds and to provide that support for those. It's one thing to have a plan, but it's quite another to have the resources and the support to provide those persons out there in the district.
Thank you.
What I have for you, of course, is a copy of the statement, which contained more specific concerns and recommendations for an appropriate response.
Okay, please give that to Ms. Borg. Okay? Pardon me?
Do I get three minutes, or do I need to wait?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Do I get three minutes, or do I need to wait?
Well-
We have just two more speakers.
We have two more, which number are you?
I'm Eight.
Number Eight, and who else is left?
Nine.
Okay, I thought we had Eight and Nine already. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I was offering an extra minute to him, because he is a senior and wasn't able to stay later, so.
Right.
But what I'd said to people in general, and I want to be fair, is that if two minutes before the meeting, and if you want to do the full three minutes, to do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much for being considerate. Okay. Excuse me, go for the two minutes. Okay.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Maxine Schirard, a retired educator, who's taught math and science at the secondary community college and university levels. Have also taught and consulted in teacher training. As an educator, community activist, and taxpayer, student achievement and success, as well as resources, programs, and personnel that motivate high expectations and outcomes among students, are my highest priority. Board members, it would be sad, a very sad protocol, to dismiss an employee whose vision and actions are to raise the achievement levels and high expectations, high expectations of all students in Area One, regardless of culture, language, gender, socioeconomic conditions, et cetera. I came today to speak to you about the dismissal of Dr. Brenda Campbell, as Area One superintendent, whose leadership skills and nurturing has encouraged what I consider to be some great things to happen in this district, whose performance has contributed to the raising of CST and API scores of students and schools in Area One, who is innovative and creative in promoting relevant curriculum and teaching methodology, who is passionate about her job and the successful outcomes of Area One students and schools, and who has worked tirelessly to include parents and the community in strengthening relationships and partnerships for the good of the community. Board members, please reconsider, revisit, the action of dismissal of Dr. Campbell, as it could likely contribute to the addition of another charter school in San Diego.
Thank you. Okay. I believe that's which?
Number Six speaker.
Number Six, okay, I am not keeping track of the numbers here, so I'll trust you. Number Six?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Lamar Slater. For one year now, the district has been working with the Association of African-American Educators with implementing the Blueprint for Success. In this blueprint, it calls for African-American students to have a completion of A through G college requirements, which requires students to have a four-year plan. Additionally, it calls for African-American students to fill out at least two scholarship applications. At Lincoln High School, the counselors did not work with students to complete a four-year plan, and 600-plus students received Ds and Fs in their classes. This is not new to Lincoln. It has been one of the lowest achieving levels in the school district. The community-based school reform and quality schools in every neighborhood calls for the quality in each school. Lincoln has a history of adults expecting less students that attend the school. In the '60s, unfortunately, students of color were counseled and directed towards vocational skills to learn a trade. These students were relegated to taking average or remedial classes at times, and these students were not told, directed towards college, but to become working-class citizens. Well, it appears that history is repeating itself. Almost three-fourths of Lincoln's students are deficient in credits and need to make up credits to be at grade level. How did this occur? The system has failed these students. Just recently, it was reported that the district wanted to change its graduation credit requirements to have students take technical classes. Thanks to active concerns of community board members, the, thanks to active community, the board agreed to not change the graduation requirements. This change would have repeated history of not allowing students of color to be expected to go to college. It is critical that the equitable support of $9 million is given to students that is needed the most. These are Title I dollars, and are needed to train counselors and monitor the progress of students while they are taking A through G classes. Well, language is a critical component of implementing A through G, and there is a need to hire these teachers. As a community, we're requesting the report of this $9 million, consisting of items for programs, budget, and implementation plan, including monitoring and measurement of all success for each of these items.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay? We have two more speakers, Valentina Hernandez, and then Mark Garrel.
Thank you very much. You guys know who I am. I am the DLEC chairperson. I'm also a very activist community member and parent at Hamilton, Monroe Clark, and Hoover. I want to let you know that my students, my children did excellent on the CSTs. My boy came out advanced in English and math in the CSTs in second grade last year, and so my other students, they're, one of them's not doing as great, but the other one's doing excellent, and he's also in band. I downloaded the video that they just had at Hoover for their rally, their homecoming, so you could look on my Facebook page under Valentina Hernandez and look at the video. It was at 7:15 in the morning or so, but I could PM by mistake with my phone. Anyways, it was in the morning. It's hard to see because of the sun. But anyways, I'm here to remind students and the schools that are in program improvement that there's the SES tutoring, the free tutoring for students, that if they are low in one of the subject areas, in either math or English, in the CSTs, they qualify to get the free tutoring. There's Avanza Online, there's other ones where they could actually keep the computer after 20 hours of tutoring. Oh, no, somebody's calling me. And it's very important that people go and drop it off, because you don't want to risk it not arriving on time and getting, losing the opportunity of being considered for the free tutoring. I know that money is tight and spaces are limited, so it's very important that you make sure that you go over there by Market Street by Shoya Smeed Elementary to the SES office and drop it off personally. It's very important. And also, I want to say that, again, I come to you to make you see the importance of making Hamilton a dual-language immersion school next year. Don't put it on the back burner and put new schools that are barely getting kindergarten and first grade this year, such as Sheroki Point for dual immersion. We need to have schools that have a history of having bilingual that has been effective, and because of Burson, it went downhill, but it's going up again. Okay, also, I'm here for the 6-2-6 situation. It has not been resolved. I did not get no follow-through from you guys. You guys did not give no support. The students are unhappy, the staff is unhappy, the children are unhappy, my son does not want to go to 6-2-6 anymore.
Okay.
And also for DLEC.
Thanks, Valentina. We got to stop.
Our bylaws need to be revised, and we need a meeting ASAP.
Okay, thank you, Valentina. Okay, and Mark Garrel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Garrel, and I'm with Carmel Partners. We are a multifamily real estate group, and we're also a long-term investor and stakeholder in the San Diego community. Speaking tonight with regard to the bid process for the sale of surplus district property. As you are well aware, on June 22nd, the board passed the resolution of intent to sell various surplus property, and directed staff to conduct a formal bid process, formal public bid process, and I emphasize formal public bid process, because there are certain standards and expectations that go along with that. That process included submitting a signed purchase and sale agreement referencing the resolution of intent to sale, financial statements and qualifications, $75,000 cash deposit for each property, as well as participation in an oral auction. In addition to that, all of the respondents invested significant time and resources in evaluating the feasibility of our development plans in order to structure competitive proposals. On September 27th, the oral auction was held, and Carmel Partners was the highest bidder for the Mission Beach Center property, and the second highest bidder for the Barnard Elementary School Site. On October 9th, just at your last meeting, the board approved the Barnard Elementary School Site for sale, and took no action on the Mission Beach Center Site. Both properties generated bids of $16.5 million, although due to the larger size of the Barnard property, that property, the purchase price was approved at only $40 per square foot, versus the Mission Beach Center Site, which would have been approved for $170 per square foot, more than four times the property that was approved. We participate, could I have three minutes, please?
Just one, no, if you want more time, you have to come at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Just one more point.
Basically, we just urge you to focus specifically on that, the expectations that go into that process of a public bid. It's a very, it's a kind of a sacred process, a public bid, and the results would have been completely different if we had different, if the respondents had different expectations about the fact that some properties might have been approved and some properties might not have. We had no expectation, none of us did, so I'm not speaking really on behalf of just Carmel Partners, it's really everybody participating in the process. The process would be significantly flawed if the Mission Beach Center property was not approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now, would you please stand? The Air Force JRTC Color Guard from Mira Mesa High School will now present the colors. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you wish to address the board today and you've not filled out a form, please pick one up at the table over here to my right and turn it in to Ms. Ward. There are two ways in which you can speak. One is on items that are not on the agenda, which we have at the beginning of the meeting, and then we can continue at the conclusion of the meeting. And the other opportunity is when there's a specific item on the agenda that which you want to address, please have your form turned in by the time we get to that agenda item, so we can allow you to speak on that particular item. So at this point, before we begin the meeting, I'd like the ASV representatives to the board to introduce themselves and just tell us a little bit about yourselves and what's going on at your high school. We have today represent La Jolla, SCPA, and Primera Mesa High School, so if you could each introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Daniel Hamilton. I'm the ASV president of La Jolla High School and also of our ASV President's Council for the school district. As far as, did you want us to give the board or the report from our?
We'll wait that.
Okay.
Just La Jolla.
Just La Jolla. Excellent. So this week, or as I'm sure you all know, October is generally dedicated to Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Our school has taken this week in particular and focused on breast cancer awareness, and as a part of that, we're selling shirts, ribbons, and wristbands on our campus, and we're donating all of the proceeds to cancer research. Our volleyball team has dedicated, has dedicated one of their games to breast cancer awareness, and they call it Dick for Cure. It's actually the third year that they're doing it. And they also donate a portion of the proceeds from what they sell to cancer research. As I'm sure some of the other schools are throughout the district, we're getting into the homecoming type era for the school year, and so our school's busy prepping the dance and all the activities that coincide with that. Our homecoming game will be Friday, November 2nd versus Kearney, and so I'd invite Mr. Barnett to come out to that. Those are both schools in your district, I believe, and so you might have to wear two t-shirts like, like.
Mr. Bizer.
Exactly, exactly. But we'll be the home team, so they always get the favorite. And aside from that, tonight is one of our school's biggest fundraisers for the year for our foundation. It's called Taste of La Jolla, and it's part of the reason why I'm going to have to leave a little bit early tonight. But all of the proceeds from, from the event tonight, food is donated by restaurants throughout the La Jolla community, and all of those proceeds are donated back to our foundation, which funds supplies for our school and actually a few teacher positions. And so that is tonight, and I don't know if anyone has a chance to run by there later tonight. That starts at 5:30, or 6:30, excuse me, and all of the.
Oh, we should be done by then.
That's, that's right. And the last item, I guess this will be the last meeting before the election, our school is participating in a mock election, which is sponsored by the Board of Education for California. And so every classroom will be participating, and we'll do it in the history classrooms, and students will have the opportunity to vote on not only candidates but also propositions and other ballot measures. And so that'll be the week before the election, next Tuesday, October 30th.
Do you have any information on who's leading at this point?
Unfortunately, we don't have any, any polls of that nature.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alyssa Kino, and I am the ASV president and SCPA and the secretary for the ASV President's Council in our district. Coming up this week at my school, we have our annual Halloween dance, which is actually for all students, not just our high school. We incorporate our middle school and high school students as well. Also, in front of all the board members, I've also placed our calendar for the year for all of our performances, if anyone is ever able to come, because we put a lot of pride into our arts. This year, we also have, we're working on a partnership with the Thelonious Monk Jazz Institute, and a representative from their school, from their institute will actually be visiting our school this Friday. Additionally, we are also working on continuing our partnerships with Donald Mikhail, who's a Tony Award-winning choreographer. This week, we also begin our senior exhibitions, so if anyone is able to, I invite you to come by our school this Thursday to view our vocal majors' senior exhibitions.
Thank you. In case anybody doesn't know, SCPA stands for School of Creative and Performing Arts.
Hi, I'm Kwame Lee. I'm from Primera Mesa High School, and I'm also the ASV Council historian. Currently, at my school, our homecoming passed about two weeks ago, so we're celebrating the success from our dance. And last week, we just currently had our Anti-Bullying Week, which I found very successful, in my opinion, because last year we weren't able to have one, but this year we were. And I believe it really made a difference, and kids actually participated in our activities and events that we had. We also, we're also doing Red Ribbon Week this week. In addition to Red Ribbon Week, we're also doing Breast Cancer, since October was such a busy week for, or a busy month for us, we're having a Breast Cancer Day where everyone wears pink, and which is tomorrow. If you've ever seen Mean Girls, it's that reference on Wednesdays, we wear pink. And upcoming events is our senior night. I also invite you guys to our senior night. It's against Saints, so I don't promise that we're going to win, but I think, I think our games are really fun. Our band is amazing, and I think they make the games, and that's why people come. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to the acting superintendent, Dr. Nellie Meyer, for administrative assignments and for her information report.
Thank you. The following are the superintendent management appointments. Sonia Picos, interim executive director for special education. Elizabeth Listy-Gillingham, principal of Patrick Henry High School, and she comes from Deportola as principal there. Willie Neal, from vice principal at Farb Middle School to principal of Millennial Tech Middle School. And Kathleen Gallagher, from vice principal at Bell Middle School to vice principal at Zamorano Elementary School. And those are the appointments for this evening. And then as far as the, the report, I wanted to share that I had the good fortune of visiting the Whittier Center last week and touring the campus with Dr. Joe Fulcher and program manager Janice Von Ark. And the Whittier Center, for those of you who are not aware, they offer a separate school option for K-12 students who are non-diploma-bound. And this particular campus has embraced the Vision 2020 and the content standards, but they also include behavioral, communication, academic, sensory, and/or social supports for students within our district. They also provide a highly structured educational environment to help students with independent living and transitioning towards schools. I also had the good luck to attend the Riley School and New Dawn Program, and they currently, their manager Danielle Clark leads this particular special education center for students who are K-12 as well, and they are students who have serious emotional and behavioral concerns. And the New Dawn Program, which is located on the Riley campus, is the program that is specialized for the high school students who also have the behavioral and social emotional concerns. And this small school was wonderful to see. The staff embraced the campus, embraced the students, they supported them towards academic success and vocational counseling, and this is a diploma-bound program. And lastly, as far as the school visits, Sessions Elementary successfully completed their accreditation process for the International Baccalaureate Program, and they were declared to be a Model IB program for the early years, and they were commended for their district leadership and district support. They were commended also for their wonderful classroom instruction. Trustee Barrera, Area 5 Superintendent Mitzi Moreno, as well as other principals who came to the accreditation from Mission Bay High, Pacific Beach Middle, McKinley Elementary, and Jefferson Elementary were all there. And in the summary of the program, they commended the principal Sue de Vicarius for her district-wide leadership to support the International Baccalaureate Program. Another significant highlight this week, State Superintendent Tom Torleksen recognized San Diego High International Studies as a Blue Ribbon Award winner. And kudos go to the teachers, students, and leadership and classified support who all worked together to make this award possible. San Diego High International Studies is recognized as one of the state's highest-performing schools and earlier received the nomination, but it was confirmed with a visit that came to the campus. Another ceremony that occurred, Principal Jeff Olivero at University City High School led the white coat ceremony. And for those of you who aren't aware, this is the ceremony where students transition from the pre-clinical health pathway to internships via Project Lead the Way. And these internships have a ceremony where they give the students the coats that they will wear when they are in the labs and working in the various hospitals and other places across the city. And this is made possible with our College and Career Technical Education Department, and they will wear these labs as they work in urgent care clinics and other local hospitals. And then lastly, I want to note that our academic team met with the African American educators to review data and discuss the implementation of the African American Blueprint for Student Success. And I wanted to especially thank Armando Ferias, who is the principal of Baker Elementary, and he and two of his teachers came and did a wonderful presentation on how he has been working towards closing the achievement gap on his campus. And thanks also to the AAAE president Vernon Moore for leading this committee as well. So a very eventful week and a lot of good things happening.
Okay, I'd also like to point out Superintendent Bill Koba is currently on vacation, and he will be returning this week, and so then Dr. Meyer will move back to her regular place over there. But she's been doing a great job while, while the superintendent has been on a well-deserved vacation. Okay, let's go now to board information reports. Let's start with Mr. Bizer today.
I was proud to represent the board at the annual NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner on Saturday evening and present the president Lechala with a proclamation from the San Diego School District, recognizing the NAACP for all their work and their help with closing the achievement gap in San Diego Unified, and all the work with the African and African American Educating Committee with the blueprint. Other than that, I think it's been a very busy couple, last couple of weeks with some other things, getting in a lot of CST data and kind of going through that, visiting the cluster councils. I went to the Scripps Ranch Community Cluster Meeting last week, the Sarah High School Community Cluster Meeting last week, and the Patrick Henry High School Cluster Meeting last week. That's all I have to report.
Mr. Barnett? Pass. And Mr. Barrer?
Well, I'd like to join Dr. Meyer in congratulating San Diego High School of International Studies for its Blue Ribbon recognition. That community, the students, the parents, the teachers, the classified staff, the administrators went through an awful lot last year, and to be able to stay focused on, on creating incredible opportunities for students and to be recognized as the only Blue Ribbon school in San Diego County is just an incredible achievement. And, and I also join Dr. Meyer in congratulating Kate Sessions Elementary School for successfully going through its process with the International Baccalaureate certification. And the thing that I think, again, stood out at, at the Sessions visit from folks from the IB program was the degree to which the IB schools from throughout the district have come together, are working together, are sharing ideas, and are supporting each other, so that, you know, ideally, the conversation that we're going to be able to have going forward in the next few years is how do we expand the IB program? How do we see more examples like San Diego High IS throughout the district and not just this, this constant focus on how we, how we survive the latest round of budget cuts? So very, very inspiring work that's going on in our schools. I also want to absolutely thank a group of students that have formed an organization called Save Our Schools that held a rally a couple of weeks ago over right in front of Roosevelt Middle and were incredibly, incredibly articulate about why we, as Californians, should be supporting all of the education measures, Prop 30, Prop 38, Prop Z. We've got a choice in front of us as a community. Do we turn our backs on the public education system, or do we reinvest and see that possibility? And anybody who would have had a chance to hear these students speak at their rally, I think it would be very, very difficult to answer that question in any other way, but it's time to reinvest in our public schools. So tremendous leadership by those students, and I want to, again, say thank you to them.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to report that I had the privilege of meeting with Governor Jerry Brown today. He visited Perkins Elementary and was followed with a press conference, and he's a real champion for, for funding for public schools in California. He was speaking out about, about Proposition 30, and I think this is really becoming a nonpartisan issue in terms of getting business groups, labor groups, and all the people in the community really rallying around. Now, as a board, we have already unanimously supported both of the state propositions, 30 and 38, as well as our, our local Proposition Z. And I was very impressed by the governor's energy and passion in favor of education and in, and in support of the kids of California. He obviously inherited a very difficult situation, economic situation, and the state budget situation a couple of years ago when he came in. He's really been trying to work with the legislature to fund education. The two parties haven't really come together on this, and so he has put the, his proposition on the ballot, and we also have Proposition 38, both of which are really to benefit our public schools. And one of the things I said at the press conference is that we really have demonstrated that we have public schools in San Diego that are worth investing in. And a little later tonight, we're going to hear about some of the API results, basically the, the state target of an 800 API in every school. Just four years ago, we only had 31 schools who reached that level, and now, four years later, we have 113 schools that have reached that level. That's pretty impressive, and that's really due to the hard work of our teachers, and we want to keep our, our teachers, teachers in the classroom. We really want to continue with our program of having reasonable class sizes, and this is really going to be dependent on the ballot measures that we have on the ballot. There were some real, real standouts in terms of the, the performance on API. I think the top high school this year was Scripps Ranch. I think one of the schools to call out is Stanley Middle School, was the only school in the district and one of only three in the county that actually exited program improvement, which is certainly quite a feat. So I think when we're seeing these results in San Diego, and the message keeps coming back, that we are producing results, but we're not going to be able to continue to produce these results, and not going to be able to accelerate the results and get all of the, every group involved in, in terms of this high-level achievement if we don't have the basic funds we have for educate, that we need for education. And I'm, I'm really confident that the, the public, the community, the voters in California are really going to send a strong message that we want to support public education in California. So everybody remember, November 6th is Election Day, and it's going to depend on everybody turning out and voting and speaking up for education. Okay, at this point, motion to adopt the agenda?
I would move with one recommendation, Item H5, two, which is appointment to the Independent Citizens of the ICOC, that we move that to January, so the, whoever the new board member is who can appoint that position. So I'd move the agenda with continuing that.
Okay, so you moved to approve except for Item H5. Is there a second to the motion? Okay. H5 is the, is the trustee Jackson's appointment to the ICOC. And she is not present tonight, so.
And her previous appointment, I guess, resigned. So at this point, with an election in two weeks, I think as a courtesy to whomever the new trustee may be, that I think it would be appropriate to let them make that appointment. So.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion to at least, at the very least?
And I don't have any objection to the specific appointment. It's just, I just think we have a new board member coming on, and it's just kind of to do it right before they come on is kind of a, you know, insulting, so.
Okay. Well, I guess what we can do is address that.
is who can appoint that position. So I'd move the agenda with continuing that item.
Okay, so you moved to approve except for Item H5. Is there a second to the motion? Okay. H5 is the trustee Jackson's appointment to the ICOC. And she is not present tonight, so...
And her previous appointment, I guess, resigned. So at this point, with an election in two weeks, I think as a courtesy to whomever the new trustee may be, that I think it would be appropriate to let them make that appointment. So...
Okay, is there a second to that motion to at least, at the very least?
And I don't have any objection to the specific appointment. It's just, I just think we have a new board member coming on, and it's just kind of to do it right before they come on is kind of, you know, insulting, so...
Okay. Well, I guess what we can do is address that item when we come to it, H5, and decide on the action at that point, since there isn't a second to that. Is there a second to, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as it is written?
Seven.
Okay, sorry. Okay, please vote. Okay, and we'll address Item H5 when we come to it then. On the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Ms. Ward, do we have any public speakers? Okay. Okay, first of all, on Item E4, we have Edith Smith.
I came to you to address you on this matter. This is a high amount of money that could be used in our classrooms, that could be used to support our students, and yet we're going to pay an organization to do something that we pay area superintendents to do. Principal development, from what I understand, is a part of what area superintendents do. We're currently paying Dr. Campbell to do the work that we're now trying to hire a consultant to do, and this organization employs people that we released, San Diego Unified's ex-staff that we released that will be coming back to do the work. That hardly seems like the appropriate thing that we should be doing. I beg you to reconsider this. I'm not saying that some of it isn't necessary, but not so much of it, and we need to utilize the talents and the skills that we have. Principal development is part of area superintendent's job. Let the area superintendents with the skill do the development. Maybe we need a little bit extra, but not $96,000. Thank you.
Thank you. And then on Item E12, Dr. Karen Childress Evans.
Good evening, members of the Board, Deputy Superintendent Milo. I wanted to let you know that I want, first of all, I want to thank the Board and all of the decision-makers in the district for supporting the arts in San Diego Unified. You guys have been rock stars, and we are still standing for that, and the kids are benefiting it, and it's just really cool. What I've wanted to remind everybody tonight is that on November 3rd, that's before the election, it's a Saturday, it'll be at Madison High School in the Claremont area, we're going to have an All-District Employee Glee Club sing-out, and this is a second annual one. We're hoping to make over $10,000 to help fund arts programs through, across the district, and these are really, really important. It's so fun. These guys, we just sang last night, we just had our, next to our last rehearsal last night. It was so fun. And the guys are really, there's some surprises. I want all of you guys to come if you can, so let me know if you need tickets. We have them. The tickets are $10, and every dime goes to paying for high-quality arts programs for our kids, so thanks so much. And you have the flyer in front of you. So November 3rd in Madison High School, 7 to 9, be there, $10. You can call the VAPA department if they have any more questions.
Is Mr. Stover involved in this?
No. Do you want to, you want to come?
I thought he was going to DM me.
I thought I was the soloist. I thought...
We asked you, and you did not come. But no, you can if you want.
One more rehearsal, right?
Yeah, there is, and we'll take ringers. But thank you, guys, thank you again so much for your continued systematic support of the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and citizen here, citizen, citizen and citizen. Okay. On, this is for consent agenda items, I'm sorry. I realize there's another citizen with a number here. Okay.
I'd like to poll 14.
You'd like to poll E14?
So I'll move approval except for 14 unless someone else is pulling 14.
Any others to poll? No? Okay. So move to approve all except E14, and second, and please vote. Okay. Now we will go to Mr. Hamilton for the ASB President's Report on what the ASB Council of Presidents is up to.
Yes, so we had our last meeting just over a week ago, and the majority of the agenda was set in planning our Anti-Bullying Week. I had the pleasure of attending a program sponsored by the San Diego Psychology Association with Dr. Evans and spoke out as a student representative to the challenge that bullying is in our school district and in our schools, and what we're doing as student leaders and as students to combat it and prevent it. And so with the, you know, the importance that our council has decided that the topic or issue of bullying is, we've dedicated an entire week this year to anti-bullying and bullying awareness and not only what we can do to prevent it, but other measures and things like that. And so that week is December 10th through the 14th, and our main goal in doing this is to hopefully next year, and, you know, kind of set a precedent, that the San Diego Unified School District will adopt one week of its school year and have all the schools on board into an anti-bullying awareness-type week. And so that's our, that's our main goal. We're currently working on a written proposal, and hopefully I will have that to present to you all at the next meeting. And I'm not familiar with the exact procedures or how we get that on the agenda voted on, but I'm sure I can ask one of you all.
Here, we'll help you.
Excellent. And aside from that, our next meeting is on Wednesday, November 7, signed by any board members who'd like to attend. We meet in this building, just in one of the rooms down the way, so if anyone would like to attend, we'd love to have you to get insight. I know a lot of the members of our council have a lot of questions, and it'd be great if you'd like to show up, and I'm sure you'd be able to help us out and to answer any of the questions that we do have and to hear kind of what the concerns are of the council. And aside from that, our Student Congress, which not only has the ASB Presidents there, but also six, five to six representatives from each high school, will be on Wednesday, November 14th. And so if anyone would like to attend that, that would be great. And that's everything I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Hamilton is the President of the ASB Council of Presidents. Maybe one day he will be sitting up here on the school board. We'll see. Okay. Okay. All jokes aside now, we will now move on to the next item, which is a Public Hearing Resolution of Certification of Sufficient Textbooks and/or Instructional Materials. This must be heard at 5:30 PM or later. Pursuant to the direction of Mr. Schenke, we will now open the public hearing. Any comments on this matter? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed, and that concludes the public hearing. Is that correct? Yes, we need a motion on this.
Move a first.
Okay, please vote. And if I had looked ahead, I would have also done another public hearing. We'll have to open another one. The resolution on the matter of certification of provision of standards-aligned instructional materials. Any public comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for that. A motion to approve? Motion to approve? Second, Mr. Burnett? Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes 4-0. And now we're going to the 2012 Accountability Progress Reports. Dr. Meyer?
Yes. Tonight, we bring before you a presentation that gives you the details of the California Accountability Report. And of note, it is important to state that San Diego Unified now has an overall score of 808, and that is something to applaud. We broke the 800 mark, which is the state goal, for the first time, and have had six years of continuous progress. And now we are ranked in the large urbs second to Garden Grove, and we have surpassed San Francisco. So that is something that we have, we plan to discuss with San Francisco. But we also want to, we also want to share that despite the great good news that we've broken the 800 mark, we still have quite a bit of work left for us to do. And you will see that outlined within the specific reports that outline our goals for API as well as our goals for AYP and the difference between the two. So I'd now like to introduce our Executive Director of Monitoring and Accountability, Ron Rode.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Well, Dr. Meyer and Dr. Evans have stolen all the high points of the presentation.
Most surprises.
Just want to remind folks that this is our annual report that comes from the State Department of Education and includes three components. One is the federal accountability, which we typically call AYP or Adequate Yearly Progress. Then there's the state accountability, which deals with the Academic Performance Index, as Dr. Meyer was just speaking about. And then lastly is the intervention program with program improvement. So I'm going to talk first with our federal accountability system, and there are four criteria that we have to meet with that. One is participation. We have no problem meeting that. We have to test 95% of our students, and we do that regularly, actually about 99%. And then the toughest part is, the second one is the annual measurable objectives, which essentially is the percent proficient on our state tests. And as you can see on this slide, the English Language Arts goal was 78%, and math was equally the same, almost at 78.2. Those thresholds are going to go up in the next two years by another 11 points. Next year, we'll be at 89%. And then as most people recall, by 2014, we're going to hit 100%. At least that was the target. It's important to know that this is a status system, the federal accountability, in that you have to reach the target in order to get credit for a student being proficient. There is no credit, if you will, or the system is blind to any improvements below that. So schools that were to improve the achievement of a student who's far below basic, our lowest performance level on our tests, to basic, for example, which is in the middle, that student is not part of the AYP proficiency, and therefore that improvement is not recognized as part of the AYP system. And then the other two indicators left there are meeting the state overall goal for AYP, a score of 740, and then graduation rate, and the state has a target of 90%. With the AYP, there are really only two areas that we're measured on, and that's English Language Arts and Mathematics, and I'll talk, it's a little bit different when we get to the Academic Performance Index. And really, the only clarification it's important to make here is some people forget that at high school, we only use our 10th grade high school exit exam results, and that's the grade level where all students must take that test once. So, and then there's also some CAPA results in there, but oftentimes, schools look at the results, and they look at the numbers of students, and they forget that it's just the KC. Here, we're looking at the performance of our different student groups and the district-wide results as well, and anything in red up here is a target that was missed. And again, with those targets continuing to go up and up, where that's 78%, it's much, much harder to reach that. And I just want to draw your attention to two slides here, or pardon me, two cells. If you look, for example, in the middle column for English Language Arts, there's that 76.6 for two or more races, it has an asterisk, and that's because that group did not reach 78%, but it met that target by something called safe harbor. And essentially, that means we, as a district, we improved the performance of students who are not proficient by enough to also reach that target. I won't go into the technical explanation, but there is a means of reaching some targets if you improve a little bit. And the other thing I want to point out is for the all-students line at the top, and if you look at the 2012 results for Mathematics, it's 62.6. You may recall about a month ago, I was here talking about the CST math results, and we were at about 50%. So again, there's a difference here, and that these math results at high school only include those KC results. They do not include the CSTs at 9th, 10th, and 11th grade, so that makes a dramatic difference in the percent proficient for Mathematics. And then one other key difference from last month, when we look at this English learner group here, this group includes students who have been reclassified, who were former English learners, but they are now fluent, but they have not scored proficient three times on the English Language Arts Test and CST. So they're kept in that group and measured along with continuing English learners, so the results are going to be a little bit different again from what we saw last month with the CST results. And then, as I already mentioned, we met the threshold for overall API growth result of hitting 800. That is going to be the target in a couple of years, and so we've done that as an urban district. Very proud of that, of course. And then the next slide is looking at graduation rate, and this is a change from prior years as well, in that it used to be that we only had to measure, or pardon me, meet the overall district-wide target, and indeed, we did meet that here. We were at 85.46, and there was only one other large urban that surpassed us in graduation rate. But we met it for almost all of our groups, and the one that we did not meet it therefore was our students with disabilities. And among the other large urbs, as we'll see a little bit later, there are a couple that did make it, so there's an opportunity perhaps to have conversations with them and see what they're doing with that student group.
The second line there might be a little confusing to people on that previous slide. It says American.
Something happened with our...
Okay, I just meant, I wanted to point that out, that we weren't...
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay. Someone might misinterpret that.
So here's a summary of all of our results for AYP, and we've talked about each of those independently, so I won't spend any time there. And here's that urban district comparison that I was talking about, where you can see that none of the urban districts is making all of their AYP criteria, and none of them are making their AMOs or those percent proficient targets. And here we see that two did make it for graduation rate, Garden Grove and San Francisco. Garden Grove was a lot higher than we were, about 75%, and San Francisco was about 58%. We were about 48%. So again, we need to perhaps have some conversations with those two districts and see is it somehow different in how they're classifying students, their process for that, or they have other support programs. So it's just an opportunity to learn perhaps and see how they're supporting those students. Now I'll turn to the state accountability results, and as we have already celebrated, met that 800 target, now 11 points up from our base score from last year. And here's a look at the individual student groups, and as you can see, all groups went up, which is good news, of course. But we also look here, and we see that some of our typically lower-performing groups have made more improvement than our higher-performing groups. So if we look, for example, at the African-American student group, Pacific Islander, the Hispanic group, and English learners, for example, all double-digit improvement, whereas our typically higher-performing groups, Asian and white, were at 3 and 9 points respectively. So that's, of course, what we want to see. We want all groups to continue to improve, but we also want to close that gap by having our lower-performing groups improve more. Here are some statistics about the performance of schools meeting growth targets. And in this one, going back to a discussion that was mentioned earlier, if we look at the number of schools that are at or above 800, and because we also use these data to inform our evaluation of the LEA Plan, that Local Educational Agency Plan, this result, these results include only district-managed schools. But if I pull in charter schools as well, as I think it was Dr. Evans that mentioned, that there were actually 113 schools overall that were above 800. And among those, we also have 33 of our district-managed schools that are above 900. So that's a great accomplishment for them. Among those are 28 elementary schools, four middle schools, and one high school. So again, continually pushing the improvement up as we go. And again, just for context, we're looking at the other large urbs in the state, and the way the Academic Performance Index is designed, it's easier for schools that start lower in API scores to show more improvement, and that's kind of reflected here. We can see with San Bernardino and Los Angeles having the largest growth among the urbs. The rest are not terribly different, although Oakland Trails... The rest are not terribly different, although Oakland trails the rest of them. And here, again, we want to celebrate all of our schools that made growth, but this is an arbitrary cut point of 20 points of growth. 19 is not any less deserving of accolades than 20, probably. This came down to perhaps the amount of real estate and being able to put some legible text on there. But again, just a lot of schools are seeing a very impressive growth. And so this is the work of our area superintendents, looking at the schools within their areas, what they do to improve the achievement, and helping other schools to look at some of those best practices and distribute them across the district.
I was just going to say, if I could, that Baker Elementary went up 77 points. Hamilton went up 78 points. And Foster Elementary went up 59 points. We also have Pacific Beach Middle, which went up 50 points, and Scripps Ranch High, once again, at 900. And we plan to focus on these schools in our best practices workshop that we have scheduled for November 13th. And we're going to have the principals sharing and highlighting the strategies that they use for the success.
And then turning to the final component of the Accountability Progress Report, and that's the program improvement. And here, we have now 126 schools, including charter schools, that are in program improvement. Last year, we had 113. We have 18 schools that are newly identified. That means they were on our watch list last year, and they have transitioned into program improvement. 12 of the schools that are in program improvement made all their targets last year, so that's a great accomplishment for them. Were they to do that again this year, they will exit program improvement. So with some of the improvements they've made and continuing that, we certainly have that hope. And as mentioned, we had one school that exited program improvement among the three across the entire county, and that was Stanley Middle School. And just looking at the schools that are in program improvement, 36 of them actually are at 800 or above on the API scores. So the state system says these schools are doing something right. On the other hand, we have the federal system that says there's a problem here at this school. So we have these two systems that are giving mixed messages with our schools. And indeed, some of those 36 schools are 900 or above as well. So there's some of our highest achieving schools can be there. Even some of our schools that are not Title I schools and then cannot be in program improvement, they're also missing some of their targets, and they're, again, some of our highest achieving So again, we want to just call out some schools that were on our watch list last year that could have dropped into program improvement had they not made enough growth. And so here we see our elementary schools, Barnard, Cabrillo, Chesterton, Gage, and Perry, and a couple of our charter schools, Einstein Academy and Urban Discovery Academy. We also had those schools that were in program improvement already, that made their AYP goals, and therefore, again, if they were to continue that improvement this year, they will exit program improvement. And this is a chart that we typically distribute, and it's just information. So on the left is the white column. Again, those are all the schools in the district, Title I schools, that missed some of their targets this year. And if they do not make AYP again, they will become program improvement schools. And then the other five columns are years 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And then the last slide, I just want to let people know, the State Department of Education has released some new dashboard-type reports. They're called School Quality Snapshots, and they incorporate a lot of the APR information. So there's API information on them, there is AYP information, CST information. They're very nice displays, kind of like a dashboard. And so I put the URL up there if anyone wants to go and look at the one for their school. There's some tweaking that needs to be done in how the data reporting, but if you're used to using the state's Data Quest system, it's a little bit cumbersome, and these are just great reports that summarize a lot of information. So kudos to the CDE team for developing these, and I think they're very helpful for our school communities to use. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Rode. Any questions or comments on this report? Oh, okay. I have one question, just in general. We're talking about English language learners, and then when they're reclassified. It seems like we're missing out on some good information when we have students who come into our schools who do not speak English when they come into the schools, and they progress through the years and do very well, you know, and they're completely fluent, and they're very high performers academically. And when they're removed from that English learner category, we're not acknowledging what we're doing. Because the only ones that are in there are the ones who are still learning English, and when you're still learning English, it's a pretty good chance that you're not going to be performing as well academically. I mean, even though there are a few bilingual or immersion schools, but for the most part. So I mean, I realize that's the way the system is, but I don't know if there's any thing we can do about that.
Some of our other district reporting, the reports that we produce internally, we do separate out those other groups, and we can look at reclassified students, we can look at initially fluent students who also have another language, but they're determined to be fluent. So some of our internal reporting that we use, do in conjunction with our Office of Language Acquisition, looks at those different variables. But as you say, these are the rules for the state and federal accountability system, so that's the way these data are reported.
It's a very important point, though, that students who score proficient on the CELT or are at a level to be reclassified, so they are no longer an English learner, are not necessarily then proficient on the CST. There's a gap. So when students are reclassified and they are no longer an English learner, then they are typically at about the basic level. So all of the students who are, who continue to be classified as English learners have not yet reached proficiency for a variety of reasons. So it is a category that is very misleading, because every student who meets the target is no longer in the category.
But they're higher than basic?
Right around basic proficient. And when they, when they test out, then they're no longer in the English learner category. So typically, our English learners are students who are in the first three years of language or who need specific targets met within to meet proficiency. So we have many students who really are English learners, as we might normally define them, who are reclassified and not counted in our English learner population.
Yeah, because the score for being proficient is 350, the scale score, and the reclassification criterion is lower than that to be reclassified.
They're stuck in perfect form. Because they're not sufficient enough to be counted, but yet they're not an English learner. So that's, it's kind of a dink.
For the state and federal accountability systems, they're still counted in that English learner group until they've been proficient three times after being reclassified.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Beiser.
Okay. Just real quick. On Slide 21, the Year Five PI column, Slide 21. Can we put that up? On Slide 21, the blue column on the far right side lists schools that are in Year Five PI, and it says on the top of the column Restructuring. And a couple of schools kind of jumped out at me. Are these schools that have been in program improvement for five or more years?
Yes.
Okay. So I see Marshall Middle School, Farb...
No, it's not Marshall Middle.
Oh, it's Marshall Elementary. Okay, I bet. Pershing, and Farb and Taft. And so after five years, are we, as a school district, supposed to restructure these schools?
Once schools reach the fourth year of program improvement, they're required to develop a restructuring plan and then begin implementing that in their fifth year. And then they continue to revise that each year, and along with the work they do with developing their single plan for student achievement, is look at strategies and successes and challenges and adjusting that as they move forward.
So the school comes up with their own restructuring plan?
They...
Or does the district?
The school typically establishes a restructuring committee or a work group. And then working, they work through their, doing a needs assessment and coming up with strategies, and then in consultation with the area superintendent, arrive at a final plan, and then that is the one that is approved by the board each year.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, because I get a lot of questions and comments from people who are confused because of the differences of how the federal government and the state government measure the same test results. And a lot of contradictory information is out there. And I remember one example, at Stanley Middle School, a few years ago, the principal was, there were different types of awards the school was getting for high achievement, for being a distinguished school. And at the same time, she had to send out a letter to parents saying, "Your child is attending a failing school, and therefore you have these certain rights in terms of going to other schools." And I don't think a lot of people realize that the way the whole no child left behind system was set up from the early 2000s until 2014 was basically, instead of by 2014, essentially every child in every school will be at the proficient level. And we're really striving for excellence, but I don't think that, you know, perfection is really reasonable. And I think it's even become clear, we took a while compared to other urban districts in terms of moving into program improvement. And now, the Poway School District, which was generally recognized as a high achieving school district, is now in program improvement. So basically, is that correct?
I have not checked that. I'm sorry, I don't...
Okay. That's what I had heard. And so essentially, by the year 2014, most of the, most of the districts in the nation are going to be classified as failing schools. So we have this whole message out there that public schools are failing, they're failing when we're continuing to improve. And I certainly feel like we have a long ways to go, but we must celebrate the successes along the way. And I think just the fact that you mentioned, under the federal program, when students are moving up from below basic to basic, making significant progress, there's, there's no credit given. That's not acknowledged. It's not that that's where we want to stop, but we have to at least acknowledge when, when some progress has been made. So I think we need to keep pointing out these differences as we're talking to the public about, about what's going on and the contradictions in these, these different reporting systems, because, because we are getting a lot better, and yet we still have a lot further to go. But I appreciate all the detail in this report that kind of explains how the different measures are being reported.
I can confirm that Poway's in Year One.
It is. Right. Okay. So, I mean, that's sort of the design of the plan, eventually, to show that all public schools are failing. And the fact of the matter is, is if we underfund public schools, it will eventually become a reality, for people who have that particular attitude. Okay, Richard.
Yeah, I just want to, a couple of things, Ron. I just want to pick up on President Evans' point, the absurdity, the absurdity of the federal accountability system. By 2014, nearly every school in the country will be deemed to be a failing school by the federal government under the no child left behind system. The goalposts keep moving and moving and moving every year. And so I think that the work that Dr. Meyer has been leading in our district is so important on a couple of basic levels. One is, what do we define as student achievement to begin with? Do we define it as, you know, how a student performs on a once-a-year fill-in-the-bubble standardized test? Or do we look at the dashboard that Dr. Meyer and the district have been developing, which look at so many different aspects of what constitutes student achievement? Primarily, is the student able, is the student on a path to succeed in their life, you know, which is, which is what our, our mission is about. The move to common core standards is obviously a move in the right direction. It's a better test. It's a better definition of the skills that students are going to need to be able to succeed in the real world. It's not filling in a, you know, sort of a, you know, a multiple choice fill-in-the-bubble test. It's actually demonstrating an ability to think and an ability to, to produce. And so that is, that is a move in the right direction. But the work that we're doing around the 12 indicators of a quality school, looking at, when we look at the schools in our district that we see making significant progress, in some cases consistently over a number of years, in some cases, schools that have made tremendous progress over the last few years, the 12 indicators that Dr. Meyer and the staff have been developing are the common factors that, you know, schools that are very different from each other, but they've got strong professional learning communities, the staff is working collaboratively, the staff, all of the staff is taking responsibility for all the students, setting very high expectations for all the students. The principal, as Mr. Beiser is always reminding us, is in the classroom, working with the students. Parents are actively engaged. That's what we, that's what we need to look to, to decide, you know, to determine, is the school on the right track or is it not on the right track? Not this incredibly arbitrary and absurd federal definition that every school will be defined as a failing school over a period of time. And again, you look through this list of schools, I mean, San Diego's High School Science and Technology, incredible school, and incredibly inspiring work that those students are doing around, you know, developing an understanding of new technology, green technology, producing things that as adults we couldn't even, you know, begin to wrap our heads around, is being called a failing school by the federal government, which again, as Dr. Evans points out, does nothing to actually help schools, other than label schools failing according to an absurd definition. I want to, I mean, there's so many schools, you know, to point out that have been doing such tremendous work in the middle of the worst budget crisis that anybody has ever seen in our public schools. But one school community in particular that I wanted to point out, Memorial Middle School. So Memorial Middle School, a few years ago, it was being operated as a charter school. Memorial is one of the oldest schools in our, in our district, incredible history at Memorial. And the parents in the community, community leaders, teachers themselves, and students felt that there was a need for a district-run school in the Logan Heights community. They came and they petitioned the board at the time to create a new district school, and that was the, the development of Memorial Prep. And Memorial Prep faces all of the challenges that, you know, that we know are the reality in many of our communities. You know, the kids are coming from very difficult circumstances. It's a neighborhood school. It's not a choice school. The kids who show up at Memorial every day are the kids who are there because that's the neighborhood school, not because, you know, parents have kind of looked in and made a choice to send their kids there. We've had, you know, quite frankly, Logan, Perkins, Golden Hill converting from elementary schools to K-8 schools because Memorial's reputation was, you don't want to send your kids to Memorial. So let's keep our kids here, you know, let's go K-8 before they go to high school. So Memorial's been dealing with this reputation issue, all the challenges that it faces every day. And under the leadership of the principal, Georgina Baraja Sagire, and her team, that have committed to be there at, you know, one of the most challenging situations anywhere in public education, Memorial has grown by over 100 API points in three years. That's a school that knows what it's doing, knows what is necessary to educate kids, and it deserves a chance. And, you know, so I'm not interested at all in labels from the federal government that would look at a school like Memorial and say, "That's a failing school." I am interested in is, you know, are the things that are being put into place in Memorial that have been working at, you know, Roosevelt and other middle schools around the district, are they doing the things that we know will, you know, result in, in high student achievement? Obviously, they're on the right path. Obviously, you know, well over half of the schools in this district are on the right path. And our job as a community is, like Dr. Meyer said, is let's learn from what the schools are doing that is working. Let's, let's look at the best practices. Let's, let's pull the schools together to share ideas. And then, as Dr. Evans said, let's make sure that we're investing in our schools so they've got the resources to continue to do a good job. And let's continue to advocate with the federal government that they reauthorize no child left behind, you know, come into, into a system that's actually about supporting schools rather than labeling them as, as failures. But congratulations to Memorial, and congratulations to all of our schools in the district that have been making such great progress over the years.
All right.
And I'd just like to add that I would hope that even by next year, as we're refining our goals for student achievement and our indicators for, for quality school in every neighborhood, that in some ways, this information would be a footnote that we would put in small print in comparison to what in comparison to what we have done ourselves, in terms of coming up with a really good, solid measure of student achievement that the community can really understand and see, you know, whether the schools are doing what we want them to do. Okay, let's, if there are no more comments, let's move on from this item. G1, is there a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings?
Move in a second.
Move in a second, please vote. And then, Mr. Beiser, "The board directed staff to develop a financial literacy pilot program for ASB students in partnership with Wells Fargo's Community Development Departments."
Yeah, we, on the Audit and Finance Committee, it's come to my attention that this has been an idea that people have been trying to work on for a couple of years. It would just focus on ASB students, it may be a couple of pilot schools, like one or two to start, and it would help the leaders of these high schools to have a better idea of financial literacy, challenges and concerns and things like that. And so, you know, this direction, or, I'm sorry, this item, isn't saying that we're going to do this, it's just directing staff to look into the logistics. Actually, I had a meeting last night with Dan McAllister and two representatives from a bank that are more than happy, they have the curriculum and everything to help us with this. And so, I, you know, I really think that this is a great idea, and I hope that you would all embrace it as well.
There is a motion?
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay, move in a second. I think when our comprehensive plan for life skills, it's very important that we include this. Okay, please vote. Okay, and then the next issue by Mr. Beiser is, "Board directed staff to explore the feasibility and cost assessment of a new advanced placement biology textbook adoption."
I completely understand the budget challenges that we have, especially with textbook adoption. However, this issue, or this concern, came to light when some AP Biology teachers had contacted me as a fellow teacher, and they were concerned that there's a little bit of a disconnect in the state of California and with our school district. As I understand it, and that's kind of why, again, this item is to direct staff to look into it, as I understand it, the AP Biology test has changed its content and curriculum this year. So, what the kids are going to be expected to know by the end of the year on the AP Biology test is different curriculum than what we have now. So, I mean, I would love to be able to, you know, communicate to the people that make the AP Biology test, or the AP Biology curriculum, and find out if there's any way that they can, you know, push changing it back, but it's my understanding they've already changed it. So, we have to figure out, what are we going to do to get our kids prepared to succeed on the AP Biology exam at the end of the year? And so, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if we can reach out to the AP Biology exam organization, I don't know if, you know, I read your memo, Ms. Meyer, that, Dr. Meyer, that maybe we go, instead of just buying textbooks, which might cost $500, $600,000, maybe we go with CD-ROM and go electronic, which I think costs $12,000 for every kid. I mean, not $12,000 each, but, you know. So, if I have a choice between going electronic for 12 grand for the whole school district, or buying textbooks for 600 grand, I think we know, I mean, but really, this item is just to ask the staff to look into it and come back to the board with some idea, or our options, or maybe our hands are tied and we can't do anything about it, so.
We can certainly look into that, contact the college board regarding the test. I see the students behind you nodding about the change in the bio-
Can I get five?
AP Bio test. But we will certainly, not only contact the college board, we will look into how we can support classes that have changed.
Good, that was actually 15, for those of you paying attention.
I'll second Mr. Beiser's motion.
I'll move the item.
After you move the item. And definitely support, you know, the point about making use of technology. I mean, so much of what we know happens with the textbook adoptions in so many different disciplines. I think one of the teachers at the students' rally, "To Save Our Schools," talked about in his civics textbook, the last election that they talk about is the 2000 Bush-Gore presidential election, hasn't been updated. Well, by definition, in this case, you know, we're talking about, you know, a change in the AP test, by definition, with textbooks, once they're printed, they're out of date. And there's a lot of work that students are taking on that textbooks, you know, the traditional written, printed, published textbooks cannot keep up with. The students are always going to be ahead of, you know, where these textbook publishers are, so continuing our investment in technology and continuing to look at, being able to use technology to find the best material that's out there anywhere in the world at any given time, is definitely, I think, the right direction for our district to keep moving.
Okay, very good, please vote. Okay, that passes 4-0, we're on a roll. Okay, let's see if we make it through this one. Authorization excuse, board member absence, is there a motion? Moved, okay, seconded, please vote. And then, we come to item H5, which Mr. Barnett had mentioned previously, about appointment to the Proposition S Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. This, and again, this is, what he was not referring to was the person appointed, but it's the issue of Ms. Jackson, trustee Jackson's appointment, just prior to the election of a new board member, and also, unfortunately, Ms. Jackson is not here tonight.
I'm actually going to move approval of this item. I understand Mr. Barnett's concerns, however, I do know that the ICOC itself has, a couple of times, not been able to reach a quorum over the last couple of months because they're down a couple of appointments, one of them is mine.
And Dr. Evans, in fact, yeah, that's a problem.
That will be coming. I've got one ready to go. But, you know, Mr. White, Reginald White, that Ms. Jackson is appointing, I mean, seems eminently qualified, and just seems like would be a terrific addition to the ICOC, so I'm going to actually go ahead and move approval of this recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second it. I mean, anything to help the ICOC in the next couple of months, I mean, it is, you know, I think Mr. Barnett mentioned earlier, that this term that we're filling does expire in January, and so then the new trustee can go ahead and just fill it at that time, in January. So, I think it's-
This appointment would be for what time period? It would be for a couple of years.
Yeah, I think it's the-
It fills the remainder of the term of the person she just appointed, which I think is down here.
Right, well, that just happened, so, but I mean, but the person who resigned previously, the term ended-
Not sure if it's the February or the August.
Well, it shows two vacancies that expire in, one in February, or one in February-
One in August.
And one in August, but there's also the two vacancies, Dr. Evans and Dr.-
Right, which is the one that would be filled here on this list here, we have vacant, Berg, Gordon, and so forth. Which position is this?
I am not sure.
Okay.
Does it lead to you?
I don't know either, but I do know that, I do know that you can appoint a person for up to a two-year term, it doesn't matter, I mean, the terms are kind of staggered here.
Right, but typically, what we've done is, you know, when filling a vacancy, then whoever is appointed, isn't there for two years, they're there till the end of that term, that way there's a rotation going on.
Right, I don't know which of the two vacant terms indicated on this table are, is the one that was recently vacated.
So, the appointment would either be until February or until August?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, and I was thinking it was more of a longer term.
Yeah, and I have no qualms about the individual, I don't, and in fact, the chair of the ICOC spoke positively about this person, but I think as a respect to whomever the new trustee is going to be, it can, it's kind of insulting to do an appointment two weeks before the election occurs, so I just think we should respect our incoming colleagues and colleague, excuse me, and, because one is going to remain the same, of course, and go from there. Anyhow.
I'm not going to make an appointment in the next two weeks for the position that I have. Okay, so there's a motion in a second to approve this particular one. If there are no further comments, please vote. Okay, that passes 3-0. Okay, that takes care of that. In terms of human resources and finance, human resources is still working on staffing for this year. In terms of finance, if you've looked through the reports, there's not a lot, I guess I would defer to if any board members have any specific questions about the finance monthly update, rather than going through the numbers, which are pretty routine in terms of what's going on. Do you have any, no specific questions on that? Okay.
Can they just, they don't have to do it now, but can they supply us a breakdown of the alerts of the potential shortfalls at another time, not tonight, but just give us, I know what some of them are, but some others I don't. So, we don't need that breakdown tonight, but can you just supply us with those?
Certainly, we can provide that.
That's what we-
Right, and so basically, so people understand, there's a list of potential expenses in the current year that go beyond the budget, and then there are a few where we are doing better than we expected, and so, but we just have a general total, and just kind of break them down so we know, as we're going through the year, exactly where we stand. So, Mr. Barnett, just request that they be more specific about that. You can refer to board docs if anybody wants to see the finance update report.
President Evans, can I move items I-3, I-4, and I-5 in one motion?
Okay, let's go to I-2, oh, withdrawn, excuse me. Okay, I-3, I-4, and I-5. Okay, let me see here, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and now we-
I-5 has a public hearing.
The one has a public hearing. Okay, we need to separate that. I-3 and I-4, there's a motion to approve in a second. Okay, we have some questions on that, and we also have a public speaker on I-4. So, let's take I-3 first. Item I-3, annual developer fee report for 2011 and '12, who can explain this to us? Mr. Aitken?
Mr. Stover.
I-3, yes.
Yeah, that's the finance department item.
Okay, finance department calling, calling finance for item I-3.
I-3 is a required annual report regarding collection and expenditure of developer fees, and this report covers the period of the fiscal year 11, '12. It's fairly simple, the financial summary is included on the first page of the report, beginning balance of $9 million, collections of $7 million during the course of the year, expenditures of $4 million, and remaining balance of $12.3 million. And the following page breaks, expenditures down by type, and then finally, they're sorted by project, and then Lee has identified some planned improvements for the future as the last part of that report.
So, the $7 million that's listed here is, consists of fees that were collected from developers-
During 11, '12.
During the previous fiscal year. And so, what you're doing is bringing us this report, and we are to move to accept the report or not accept the report, correct? Okay. Okay, so there was, I believe, a motion in a second on this item? Okay, good question, Mr. Barnett.
I see we're starting with a balance of $12 million as of the end of going into this fiscal year. And I guess, number, two things. Number one, on the expenditures listed by type, I guess I don't quite know what services and other expenditures are, because I guess, as I understand it, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that these fees are supposed to be primarily for the impact of development and new housing, new residences on school sites, so site impacts on sites as far as population, school population, so forth, or building new schools, et cetera. So, I'm not sure what services and other expenditures are, and then also, do we end then this year with another, $5 million still in the bank after we spend this, if we're spending about $7?
So, first of all, what is services and other-
Let me respond, Mr. Barnett. As far as the category of services and other expenditures, I do not have the detail of those expenditures and services this evening, but in glancing at that before the meeting, and then looking at the public improvement projects, which are in the next group of, the next group that's sorted, item 1 through 6, I think that most of these are involving professional service architects phase, engineering phase, and that type of thing. And I would think that in terms of services, that's probably what we're referring to here. But I'd be happy also to provide the, to provide the detail to the board, it's a fairly small amount of money, and it wouldn't be too much a problem to break it out for you.
Okay, and the-
That's last year.
Okay, so what are we, oh, so what is our balance today? And what are we, what about, so, do we approve this report a year after the expenditures occur, or do we approve and set priorities for where the money's going to be spent?
This particular report is one that's required by the government code, and it is specifically for last year, so I understand some of your questions in terms of, well, where do we stand at the present moment in 2012, '13? This report doesn't intend to provide any information about the current year, other than planned future projects, which is the last thing on the list.
Right, well, maybe in order to not take more time tonight, the staff can send us a memo, number one, breaking down, you know, what is, the type of expenditures are allowed, and services and other expenditures, and what is planned for this year? Because obviously, depending on what happens with Prop Z next, in a couple of weeks, we are going to have to have a sense of what and where you're looking at spending these in 12, '13.
What resources are left and available?
So, maybe we could have a report, and if necessary, bring back where staff recommends, or is anticipating spending these in 12, '13, and then we could discuss it at that time, if that's, and then I'd support accepting the report.
Well, I think it says, yeah, I think it says here, planned future projects or improvements, Public Improvement Project Holmes, Kimbrough, Torrey Pines, Millennial Tech, Knox and Millennial Tech, so.
So, it's the dollar amounts.
Yeah.
I think you're looking for-
Well, the amounts right there, 2.3, 4.4, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett, looking for something a little more specific than that for the current year.
And maybe he wants to know, where did we come up with this, and why aren't we looking at some other schools that maybe have opportunities?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aitken. Okay, that covers I-3. I-4 is the attendance boundary change, we have one public speaker.
Approve acceptance of the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't-
I have moved approval of acceptance of the report.
Okay, moved, seconded. Mr. Beiser, you want a second?
Mr. Ferrer?
Mr. Ferrer, you want to second this one?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote.
The baseball's over.
Okay, item I-4, again, is the attendance boundary change, sorry, I forgot that little detail there. Phil Beaumont is the public speaker.
Good evening, thank you for considering this. My name's Phil Beaumont, I'm the director of the museum school, and I'd like to ask your support in including the block between Second and Third and Maple and Laurel Street within the Washington Elementary Boundary. I'd like to thank Roy McPhail for his responsiveness in helping us out with this as well. We originated as a school downtown in the Children's Museum, as you may or may not know, and I'm happy to say that we're rebuilding that partnership with them, and we utilize downtown quite a bit as our, within our curriculum, but we serve kids from all over San Diego. from all over San Diego. Our, our school that we are at in Bankers Hill lies on the boundary of Laurel Street, which is the actual boundary between Washington and Florence. There's no kids that live on our block, nor will there ever be. We share our block with a historical Jewish synagogue and a senior living facility, and so those are the three entities on our, on our block. On a practical level, this will help our school in allowing us to continue to receive critical SB 740 funding by falling within the boundary of a school that has more than 70% free and reduced lunch population. But as well, our location is really valuable to our curriculum. We use a, programs downtown, and all the museums downtown and in Bellar Boa Park. So just asking for your support, and thanks, Barnett.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Stover, I believe in a previous meeting had explained to us some about the reason for this change, that would assist the charter schools in their grant applications and did not affect anybody in a typical attendance boundary change where it would affect actual students in the schools. I move approval. I move approval in a second. Okay, no comments, please vote. Okay, that passes 4-0. And finally, we have the public hearing and resolution, the matter of intention to dedicate to the city of San Diego and Eastman on district-owned property a portion of the former maintenance facility commercial street site. And this requires four votes. So we'll now open the public hearing on this resolution. No public comments. We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Now moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, please vote. Okay, and that passes 4-0. Okay, and that concludes the agenda items, and so now we will move to the public testimony of non-agenda items. We have one person who has patiently waited to have the full three minutes. If you need, you can have three and a half minutes, even four.
Thank you very much.
14, oh, yes.
I'd like to say, good evening to the board.
Okay, Ollie, go ahead with the public testimony. We're going to do one item after you, but go ahead and do your part right now.
Okay. My discussion is in reference to the 12 indicators for quality schools as relates to Southeast San Diego schools. Historically, in Southeast San Diego district schools, there's been a need for drastic improvement in basic academic skills among all grade levels of students. Area 1 schools like none other district have for many years faced challenges of educating students while dealing with family poverty and low student achievement. Over the past years, there's not been one area 1 superintendent that has been able to provide the necessary leadership and innovative ways to arrest the low achievement levels of our students. However, two years ago, the district made a very wise and professional decision hiring Dr. Brenda Campbell to provide the necessary leadership and innovative ways to bring improvement in the achievement levels of students attending area 1 schools. Her administrative skills for providing direction, along with an expectation among her staff to develop a commitment to putting students first, has been second to none. Dr. Brenda Campbell has demonstrated her leadership in area 1 schools through 12 indicators of quality schools as adopted by the San Diego Unified School Board. Due to time limitations, I'd planned to talk about at least seven of the indicators, but I'm down to about two in order to stay within the confines of my time. However, Dr. Campbell's work positively has accomplished all 12 indicators. One, access to broad and challenging curriculum. A through G courses were implemented by Dr. Campbell to develop a cradle for college continuum in all area 1 schools, which resulted in an increase in the number of students taking A through G courses. As a former college advisory council, as a former college academic advisor at the University of Washington, I know the importance of students being proficient in basic academic skills and to have a chance to succeed in a higher educational level. There was also support provided for students to earn a B or better in these courses. This accomplishment was displayed through the success of Perry Elementary School, who for the first time in Southeast district history earned a 905 Academic Performance Index. The community celebrated this historic achievement while the district failed to give any recognition to the accomplishment. It is unfortunate that the deputy superintendent of academics failed to even mention this historic news in a press release. Common Core standards. Dr. Campbell was the only area superintendent to purchase the Acuity Assessment System with Common Core assessments for area 1 schools. She also conducted principal professional development on Common Core standards, as well as providing Common Core standards workshops for stakeholders at cluster meetings. Quality teaching. Historically, Southeast area schools have been used as a dumping district for dancer to the lemmings or ineffective teachers. Dr. Campbell worked hard to change that practice so that students would have at least a fair chance of receiving proficient lesson plans. She purchased Acuity for teachers to assess, monitor, and, to, she, excuse me, she, she purchased Acuity for teachers to assess and monitor student achievement. She also purchased the implementation of a learning upgrade as an effective intervention for students. In ending, as you can see, Dr. Campbell is providing a necessary leadership to increase student achievement levels. She needs to be reinstated so we can, so she can finish the job of providing a quality schools in Southeast San Diego. Let me remind you all that the school district doesn't belong to the, the student district doesn't belong to the superintendent, board members, or teachers, or to the teachers' union. Stop playing politics with our students' ability to get a quality education for your own self-gain. Reinstate, Dr. Campbell, fulfill your promise for quality schools in every neighborhood. Just like the recent movie that's out in the movie theaters today, community-based school reform, we will not back down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was the non-agenda public testimony, and I failed to go back to the one item that was pulled on the concern agenda, E14.
Yeah, the reason I pulled it is, this has to do with the recycling contract, which it looks like we've already into, and I, as I recall, our waste, general waste contract was expiring in a year or so. So we had discussed at a previous meeting, and I just want to make sure that we're not spending money on this separate from our waste provider, where we could ultimately put that into the waste contract and maybe save the dollars.
This is revenue. This item is revenue. This is revenue that we're getting. This is not an expenditure item, it's a revenue item. We get money for this. It's a grant.
So revenue for, to do recycling?
Correct.
Because we don't do recycling now in some schools.
This is a three-year grant that will assist recycling programs at all our schools. It's $120,000 over the next three years.
So who, where does it, where do the recyclable, who picks them, they pick them up and take them away and all that as part of the grant?
It'll be coordinated with the school sites, whether it's ASB, whether it's volunteer programs, or it can ultimately also go to our waste provider at no additional cost to us through our, through our waste contract. But the idea is it's particularly pursuing the CRB recyclable containers and gives the schools a program to work through that.
Oh, I'm not used to seeing items that are giving us money, so.
Yes.
Good, good job.
Sounds like a good one to prove. Okay, moved, seconded. Okay, Mr. Barnett, please vote. Okay, that passes 4-0. That concludes our meeting. Good night, everybody.